We could have said that.
But mine, I only wear our prescription. But I don't need prescriptions. I only, I can see everything like plain as day, like normal. Except when I go like, this is all like very fuzzy too. Things that are little and first together.
Good morning. It is eight thirty. Welcome to the Wednesday, August sixteenth, meeting of the Board of Franklin County Commission.
Commissioner Stoudamire.
President.
Commissioner Harris.
President.
Chair Dickinson.
Present.
Commissioner Dunn.
Present.
Vice Chair Weymeyer.
Present.
Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which we stand, my name is, I'm a doctor, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. I believe we have some correspondence and organizational business today.
Yeah, Larry, you want to come up?
My name is Larry Barber. I am the president of the Over the Road Gang Car Club here in Ottawa, and I'm here today for, to ask if, a couple of questions. One, if we could get the fees for our trash service for the car show waived? And second is to see if we could have permission to use the courthouse lawn again this year for our cruise night.
Yeah, you bet.
Heck, yeah.
I greatly appreciate, and I know the car club does, so.
All right, we probably need to have an official.
Make a motion.
I'll break the motion.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you all very much.
Yeah.
And I believe we're getting you guys all T-shirts for the car shows, is that correct, Commissioner Stoudamire?
Oh, wow.
He's does.
I have to call in, I have to call in Commissioner while we're in here. But anyways, I appreciate it. Thank you guys very much. I appreciate your time this morning.
We're hoping for good weather.
I, I hope so too. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we have any public comment today? All right. The consent agenda today consists of the minutes from the meeting on August ninth, claim vouchers in the amount of one million, five hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty-seven cents, tax change orders in the amount of six hundred and twelve dollars and forty-four cents.
Motion approved.
Commissioner Stoudamire?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Weymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson?
Yes. Our only order of business today is to receive an update on the sales taxes from Advent Health, and then we're going to take a tour of the new space in, in this building. But Dallas is going to come up and... With, with help, I guess, right?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Thank you. Thanks.
So I want to introduce Sean Perry, who's our, our Chief Financial Officer here since March. He joined us. He's been a part of Advent Health for a number of years, but joined us recently here on our campus. And he's here, I'm going to share our update related to sales tax utilization and open it up for any questions. So if you see there, the, the amounts, that, the amounts and the items that were approved there on the left-hand side are, were approved in January through the RMH Board. We had a lot of discussion around those and settled on those approved numbers relative to the utilization of sales tax numbers. On the right-hand side shares the amount of sales tax revenue we've received year-to-date, and then how we have allocated the utilization of those sales tax dollars. So related to charity care, we have allocated the use of three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars just over that. Related to charity care, I will share that we, our charity care far exceeds that number. And so that is the amount that we've designated specific to the sales tax utilization.
What's charity care?
Charity care, charity, we, we've got a, a policy that we brought along with it, because I know that question has come up before, and we'd be happy to share kind of how we arrive at what charity care is. There's kind of a multi-step component of how, how we get to there. But charity care, and Sean, you can answer more related to this. Charity care is not bad debt. Charity care is a process by which folks have an opportunity to meet with a counselor and, and walk through a process, and then be designated as charity cases and then get certain deductions relative to their care.
So it's what's mandated by the Affordable Care Act that not-for-profit hospitals have to have?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's the program that all hospitals have to have as a, as a result of the Affordable Care Act? That's what charity care is?
Well, that's part of it.
So are we getting a level of charity care that exceeds like most, any other town? Or is the policy more favorable than anywhere else in the Advent system?
Our policy's centered across Advent Health, so it's not.
It's the same policy everywhere else?
This is a Shawnee Mission policy.
It's not enhanced?
No.
It's just what's required by the federal government?
Correct. That is correct.
Can you get charity care if you have insurance?
I'll do some research on that one through the, the policy force.
Okay.
I read your policy last night.
Okay. We're happy to provide copies. Those are obviously publicly available as well. Yeah. From a routine capital perspective, that's obviously a lifeline for any hospital to be able to reinvest. We've spent almost a hundred and seventy thousand of the two hundred allocated this year. Some of the investments are specific to surgery sterilization equipment, a really important engine for our OR, and we've been able to reinvest in that space and ensure that that equipment is up and running in the right way. A bladder scanner for the emergency department as well as point-of-care lab equipment that i- is specific to our radiology patients that come through. So that will shorten the time that folks that have to get a lab test prior to a CT or MRI scan will shorten the time that they will have to wait for that test to be done. They can turn around that test much quicker. From a clinic relocation perspective, which also includes the, the rehab project, we have spent obviously three hundred and forty-four thousand there year-to-date out of the sales tax dollars. We are slated to spend about one point eight million in total for the year related to that. And that is a project that's a reinvestment in our county assets here, both at the annex as well as at the ninth, building at Ninth and Main. From a critical care staffing perspective, this is obviously a space that we've had, we as well as every other hospital has been challenged in staffing. It's just a new normal in healthcare. And so we have spent a significant amount in that space, three hundred and twenty-one thousand of the sales tax dollars. I would tell you, we far exceed that relative to critical staff bonuses, agency utilization, to ensure that we've got staff here on site to make sure our hospital's providing good, safe care here. The nurse call system is approved and that equipment is ordered. That is an update, or that is a whole new nurse call system that needs to be updated to ensure that when you're in your room, you're able to communicate with our nursing staff. We've got a workaround that's allowing us to do that safely. But from a long-term perspective, that is on order right now, so that equipment is delayed in coming. We would anticipate that project being done at the end of this year or into early 2024, and we'll update along that way. From an equipment perspective, we've purchased some ophthalmology equipment that really supports that program, as well as some scopes that support our digestive health and GI program here. Related to repairs, we have invested or had to repair an elevator that's older in our building, a chiller that supports all the cooling that goes on inside of our building. We know we've had some days that have been really steamy. This year, it's been under strain, and we've had to do repairs there to make sure that that holds us through. And then portable X-ray equipment as well. And then lastly, from an employee appreciation, we've had several events and times that we've been able to invest in our employees. We have some anticipated events that we have on the backside of this year, including a fall festival where we're bringing all of our employees together, as well as our medical staff, to just show appreciation in them, as well as some things around Christmas. So we're on target with our items, with the one exception being the nurse call component. We would expect that to be something we get either into this year or early next year, so.
Is that the, I can't remember, is that the, the whole cost of the nurse call system?
That is.
That's what I thought.
Well, yeah.
So going back, finishing that conversation, charity care is for folks who are indigent. They have these medical bills they can't pay, or, and they're low-income. They're never going to be able to pay, you're required to work with them, and you have a policy to do that. Those folks already have bills, they, they're there, they're, it's over. Tell me about minimum data set, that policy you guys have, this, to get into the hospital.
Yeah, I'll let you address that one.
Say that one, which policy again?
Minimum data set?
Minimum data set. I'm not familiar with that offhand. I'll have to go pull the policy and look through it.
Okay, so that's the policy that requires your physicians, providers, nurses to gather all the information and, and insurance data? And then you determine if they're covered, which is normal? But then people are rejected if they're not deemed able to pay? Ultimately, that's decision for your finance department? The major tenet of the business, I mean, it...
Yeah.
Every procedure that isn't emergent is going to go through this process, and it's a big change that's happened to this hospital, you don't know anything about it?
So Commissioner Weymeyer, we can come back and give you a more detailed response about this?
Okay, I mean, it's a major concern because this is our taxpayer-funded sole community hospital, and people can't get into it if they don't satisfy this policy, and people are routinely being rejected. I have a real-life example constituent. I had to go to Menora Medical Center to get a outpatient surgery done because they were denied here, they couldn't do it. The only option they were given was to apply for care credit, which is a credit card that you guys have an application for, and has a twenty-nine point nine-nine percent interest rate. It was that or no?
Would, sorry, what was that?
So can we have a copy of this policy?
We sure can.
Can we know what percent of folks from the community are, are being not allowed to utilize the hospital?
We sure, we sure can give you a copy of the policy, and we would be happy to have a more detailed conversation about it.
Do we get aggregate data, not people's information, but just as far as what the rejection rate is? How many people are turned away from the hospital?
Obviously, we can't share, share specifics of any individuals, yes.
On the charity care, are they, are they notified? Are they given? I have another person here in town, she came in emergent, so she didn't have to go through the data set. She was emergent, spent a month in the hospital, three hundred thousand dollars worth of debt. Worked her whole life, had, had just retired a few years ago from punching a clock retail job, and managed to save up some money. Midwest work ethic, she got a bill, she thought she, she had to pay it, so she paid and paid, drained her retirement, and finally just had to declare bankruptcy for the first time in her life. Says she was never informed that there was a charitable care. Charitable, or financial assistance, charitable care, financial assistance. The, your policy's titled, Financial Assistance, Affordable Health Care Act calls it Financial Assistance. I think it's a better word for, like I say, somebody trying to pay their bill.
Right.
But was never informed of it. Do you guys inform them? Does somebody personally tell them when they're discharged?
So we have, it's posted that we have the program. You know, I know at registration, when, when patients check in.
Came in emergent, so I don't think that was an option for her.
Yep, I believe they do go over it with them at discharge, but we can follow up.
Are they given a copy of the policy?
There's access to the policy.
What's the requirement that you give them a copy, as well as it be posted?
Yes.
Where's it posted in the hospital?
So we have their signs for it, and then you access it on.
Where are the signs?
Patient registration, when you check in.
Then nobody tells them, though? Nobody informs them? The counselor doesn't bring it up as an option? I believe she spent hours on the phone with...
Yeah, I, so I don't want to, I would want to bring some of our experts in that space specific to that, but I believe that they do go over that with that conversation as well. So with each patient, even on an emergency basis, we have financial counselors that will round with that patient, make sure that their information's correct, make sure that they have correct insurance information. If they don't have that, I believe at that time, and of course, that, those are all individual interactions, so we don't.
But you have policies that guide the way they perform.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. And so we would encourage people to be aware of those and be.
And it's been my impression, like, we have seven hundred thousand dollars just this year for charitable care that we would at least be getting somewhat of an enhanced service for this amount of money. The community's chipping in seven hundred thousand dollars for, that's labeled here charitable care.
Correct.
She was never informed that it was an option.
Understood. And I, I don't know that specific situation.
You're telling me your policy's the same across all the health systems, so... Again, it's not enhanced, but.
Yeah, and, and that would be my question too, Dallas, is, and I just want to make sure I understand, because I don't want to put words in your mouth. Your charity care policy here in Ottawa is the same as it is in Shawnee Mission and...
It is.
Okay, and that policy is mandated by the Affordable Care Act, correct?
Yeah.
So the, the charity care, you're telling us that that's seven hundred thousand dollars? I, I mean, I can't say it any different than Colt did. It's not enhancing anything, you're just using it to cover essentially federally required expenses, correct? Pursuant to the Affordable Cares Act?
Correct.
And then, of course, this is just for people who come there emergent, and you're legally required to, to treat them.
Right.
If this is, say I come there with a...
That's where the bulk of the patients come through for this, is emergent.
Another real-life example, say I come there with a broken arm, treat the arm, get me stable, but I need pins. I have to complete this minimum data set, then if it's determined that I will not likely be able to pay, I'm not going to get the pins in my arm the next day, or, or for surgery. Because I'm stable, I may grow back with, you know, an arm in the wrong place and have a disability because of it. This is an example that's happened here in town. So again, the charity care is just folks that are already, found their way in the system because of emergent, but they're getting stopped at the door because of this minimum data set.
Relative to non-emergent.
Relative to non-emergent.
Relative to non-emergent, yeah.
And there's no option for charitable care to get into the hospital?
To get into the hospital from a non-emergent way?
Yes.
So I would...
There, I mean, then am I missing one?
So I would say relative to that policy, there's many efforts made to try to make the situation as... So exploiting somebody's financial situation, you want to do everything you can to allow that person to get that treatment. But obviously, a, a complete, completely absolving ourselves of being able to get any reimbursement relative to a procedure is a different situation, so.
So other than, so somebody has this broken arm that needs, pins need set, or they're going to have a disability. They're offered the thirty percent credit card application, if they even can get it, or what? They have no money to put down. They're a Franklin County resident.
Yeah.
What's their second option? Other than no, I guess what's their third option?
Are you, is this somebody that doesn't have insurance?
Yeah, somebody that don't have insurance, they have an arm that's broken, they need pins, that's, I mean, you have to fix a broken arm, right?
And they've been medically stabilized in the emergency.
They're medically stabilized.
So I, I don't know of the specific situation that you're, you're referring to.
Specific, we're not, it doesn't matter. I think the situation's understood. The answers are no, apply for a thirty percent line of credit, which, again, still depends on being able to get it, or how can they get in the hospital to get their arm fixed?
Right.
The taxpayer-funded sole community hospital. Or else they're going to have a disability.
And understood. Would you entertain us coming back and presenting more information to you at a subsequent meeting?
I, I hope to God there's another answer.
Okay.
As far as the amount, I think that the, being on, at the hospital board, they feel that it's very important to include charity care as a part of, to remind people that if they do come in, in, with an emergency, that the hospital will take care of them no matter what.
Yeah.
And, and that is, and so that, that board has.
What happens? There's a federal law in place.
Well, I know, but.
That ensures that.
I know, but it, I mean, this, I'm just talking, I'm just explaining the, the board's position, that they feel that that is important, so.
I think everybody does. That's why we as a community voted to levy a sales tax for two point six million dollars a year to keep the hospital going. We used to get reports that are far more detailed than this, seeing exactly where it went. What about the RMH Charitable Association? It was dissolved. Where, what is it now? It had well over a million dollars worth of assets.
The RMH Charitable Association still is in existence. It's called the Advent Health Ransum Memorial Charitable Association. That still is intact, that still has assets, and still is in existence, so that, that.
Where do they go? Where do the assets go?
The assets.
I mean, the distributions, where does that money go to?
Yeah, the bulk of those distributions still remain with the charitable association.
What are they used on?
They could be used on things around the hospital, specific to, if you look at some of the prior fundraising efforts, some of it was relative to a remodel and our preoperative.
That board's made, I'm sorry, that board's made it community folks, like from Ottawa?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's a distinctly different entity from the hospital.
All right, you have a, I mean, I've never heard of that. Not aware who's on the board, or, or what any of that money's being used to? Is there reports they put out as far as, because I know there's endowments that are still paying into it. There's a lot of community, as well as the money that was in it, when it...
Yeah, that's, but, but that's a, that doesn't sit really under the umbrella of the hospital, so there's.
But your staff keeps minutes from their meetings, does their bookwork and all that?
They have assisted them in helping keeping minutes and things around that.
Sure, so those lie, and those records lie in your facility, you're custodians of them, right?
We, we collect that information, that information goes back to that board. So that board is made up of a group of community members. Many are longstanding, some into their early nineties, that are a part of that, that board. And they're, they're committed to the broader well-being of the, the community. And so there are spaces that they've had discussions about how they could invest, even on things that would sit outside the hospital.
You can, I guess, let us know who's on that board, or maybe when you come back, just be curious.
We sure can.
Hadn't heard anything of them.
Yeah. So, so to be clear, that, the galets that have, that have been had before previously, prior to my time here, those were all around the charitable association. It's the same group and the same operation. Nothing's changed, except the name, simply because of the transition.
All right, we'd asked about an affiliation agreement, the copy of that. I think there's a definitive agreement, a lease agreement.
Yeah.
Also that went along with that. Or we would be able to get a copy of that?
Happy to.
Okay, we'd asked about, about that before, be happy to. Just curious, and, you know, what would, I guess for folks... I've been getting a lot of frustration about the, the sales tax from folks. What would the hospital look differently? I mean, I understand small hospitals, it's a tough market all over the state. Community hospitals are going under. If it didn't have the two point five million, what's, or, what, how would the hospital look different?
So it, it would put the hospital in a situation where we, we already are in a spot where investing in the infrastructure and ensuring that, we talked about the chillers, for instance. That's an example of just making sure that's cooled. We've got old chillers and old infrastructure that needs to be rested, reinvested in. Capital reinvestment wouldn't be available, and you'd ultimately end up in a spot where, from a facility perspective, investment in new, new indifferent equipment that we just talked about.
Sure, okay.
To be able to provide really state-of-the-art care, which is what we want to stand behind, is, is, would be, we, we wouldn't be capable of doing that.
And we see, you're not doing, going to do labor and delivery anymore, right?
I, we, we're not saying that. We have, we are doing everything we can to extend labor and delivery. So it, it's challenging, because you have to have a provider within twenty minutes of the OB unit to be able to do C-sections.
Sure.
We are doing, turning over every stone related to that to be able to provide care.
Our ambulance numbers show a ton, a big uptick in inpatient transfers out of Ottawa?
Okay.
I think that kind of coincides with the hospitalist's change?
Okay.
Are you worried that's going to, I mean, obviously be a huge drop of revenue if they start their care here, but ended up there, and then the billing stays at the...
So I would tell, the only data set that I would tell you around that is that we have about the same number of admissions to our hospital as we had in 2022.
Admissions?
Admissions. So those would be the same patients that would come through. We're still seeing about a hundred admissions a month. We do about twelve hundred admissions a year, and that's.
Sure, but I'm saying just recently, the, there's been a huge uptick in inpatient transfers. People going from here, starting out here, being sent up to the city, which if the majority of bulk of their care is up there, that's where the billing is going to, going to go.
Sure. I would say locally, and I would want this to, to be clear, we wanted, we want patients to be able to stay here. And the service we're providing from a hospitalist's perspective, those folks are trained to do that service. That's what they do and all they do. Nothing from a care perspective upstairs has changed in, in, in any significant way. Obviously, different providers, but we, from an admission perspective, we're right on target. So if there is fluctuations relative to transfers, that may be a month-to-month variation, but I'd be interested to see the volumes on the specific transfers, because our admissions have held steady, if that makes sense.
Sure, yeah, but if they're getting sent away, then the billing, I guess.
Yeah.
Our data says that potentially going to be losing a lot of revenue very soon. I didn't know if you're concerned about?
I absolutely want those patients to be cared for here in Ottawa.
And then last, hearing a lot of frustration from providers and, and folks in the community that things like scans, images, just tests are, are now much farther out than they used to be. Three weeks for like a CT scan is, is normal now.
Yeah. So I, I don't know if that time set is immediately, like, if that's now or previously. I would tell you that staffing was a piece that, so the fall of last year through the first quarter of this year and into even second quarter, our staffing's really been strained in radiology. I would tell you that's the same thing that's happening in Kansas City hospitals, in that there's a lot of freestanding imaging syst, imaging centers where there's no call taken, no other requirements. They get to go in eight to four and walk out, and so competition's fierce in that space. So we were, we were really challenged from a staffing perspective during that period. I can also say that we've hired several individuals that we're training right now to be a part of our imaging center going forward. So it's an important space for us, and, and I would tell you that, that gives me heartburn when we're not able to do that, but you have to have the staff to be able to make that happen. So, yeah.
All right, so we'll look for additional information, and we'll push you back on the schedule.
Happy to do it.
You think, I don't want to, I want to give you enough time, but I also want to try and get something on the calendar. You think two weeks is enough time to?
Yeah, that would be enough time. I just would, I want to make sure that lines up schedule-wise.
Yeah.
Yeah, be happy to.
Okay, okay. So somewhere, I mean, it's got to work with them, obviously, but in the next two to three weeks, we'll.
Happy to do it.
Have them back?
Yep.
I'd be willing to come in.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, we're going to do some quick staff reports, and then we're going to go take a tour. So we'll start with you.
Yeah, I want to be respectful of their time, but real quick, tax sale, we are still, I think the step that takes the longest in any tax sale... still, I think the step that takes the longest in any tax sale is getting service a process on each of the individual property owners. You have to have that service in order to actually file the suit. We're getting real close on that, and so, uh, hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we'll get the suit filed, and then we're at the mercy of the district court, but just know that that's in the works, and it's went really well so far, so, that's all I have today.
All right. Paul, do you have anything for Mercedes?
Morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Just have one, uh, question to ask you today, is QuickCom is going to do, they're going to start doing more service in Ottawa, and they'd like to do a groundbreaking, excuse me, on the 28th of this month at 11 o'clock, and I wanted to seek your permission for them to do that, maybe they're in the courthouse grounds, we'd make sure we didn't, we'd coordinate with, obviously, facilities, but also make sure we're not damaging anything. They would bring shovels and hats and kind of take care of all of that, but we're just trying to find a place in town. Um, we can't do anything with the city, the city right now is seeking RFPs on their internet, and so they don't feel like they should participate in one over another on any event, and so it's kind of fallen to me to kind of host this, and just looking for a location, and I thought the courthouse grounds would be a, a nice location if you're, if you're open to allowing us to do that there on the 28th.
Good question, because I'm getting things on Facebook also from another entity, Twin Valley. So are they both doing stuff, so you're going to have a groundbreaking for QuickCom, but not for Twin?
Well, Twin Valley hasn't asked yet, I'm sure they will.
So they are, so the city with their RFP is only for, just to take over what they already have.
Right.
And then, these other companies are coming in and doing their own thing in, throughout the community.
They're both stringing fiber, Paul?
Uh, yeah, QuickCom's stringing fiber, I don't know if Twin Valley's using existing fiber, or, or how exactly that's going, or maybe that's part of, if they acquire some of the city's fiber, but, um, don't know the details on it, sorry about that.
Sounds like either way, we're going to get a lot better internet-
We're going to have a lot of opportunities, a lot, a lot more, a lot more choices, um, are coming to town, and, um, so, yeah, it's, it's good for the consumer, but, um, just trying to help them do their little promo, and wanted to ask your permission to do it on the, and again, I want to make sure, they're going to be in town, I'm going to be at a conference, but they're going to be in town, kind of scoping out on Tuesday, so I'd have them meet with, uh, facilities and make sure everybody's on the same page and-
What day are you talking about?
28th at 11 o'clock on the courthouse, which you're all invited to.
Of August?
Uh-huh.
Sounds good to me.
You all good with that?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Um, and, and I don't necessarily need to keep Paul up here for this, but every time we get one of these requests, and it seems like they come fairly frequently, I, I get back to improvements to the lawn. Is, is that something that Brandon and I can start looking into? We've talked about irrigating it, and maybe adding some, we don't want to take away green space, but adding some landscaping, um, it would be low maintenance landscaping to not add a, a burden to our staff, but is that something that we have your blessing to explore, start getting numbers on? I think as much as that lawn gets used, to know that we can, frankly, irrigating, it's going to save Brandon and his staff time, so.
Yeah, and we talked about being able to use, I mean, it's used for a car show, tractor show, just this, this month or next month, but, uh, guest tax dollars for that?
Yeah, absolutely, a great use of TGT dollars, I just want to make sure there's no-
I think we've talked about that before, so, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions for me?
I think, any other questions?
Paul, thanks, guys.
Tom Winder, do you have anything for us this morning?
Yeah, real quick. Um, good morning.
Morning.
Yesterday, we had our preliminary kickoff meeting for damage assessment. Um, right now the county is at, well, David keeps bringing me more, um, but we're right around $40,000 of, of public non-insured damage for the county, which could go up to seven, probably $70,000 as we keep looking at debris piles and stuff like that. Uh, the city's at two and a half million right now currently. Um, we asked the, I asked the state, I was like, where are they sitting at for us to actually hit thresholds? And just in electrical work, they're at about 11 million, so it's looking pretty good that we're actually going to get a presidential disaster declaration on this, and we're looking at recovery. Um, that's good things, that, that's the, you know, it's one of those things that you get awarded, the hard part's actually, you know, going after and getting it, and doing all the work that needs to be documented, make sure, sure that happens, and that's, we're trying to set ourselves up in a good place for that now. Um, it's old hat for us, but it's, we got a lot of new people at the city, so we're working with them to try to get them up to speed, make sure they get the awards that they want, and, uh, see what other things that'll come down, so I'm probably getting with Paul if they have the Small Business Administration come in and, and grant us awards and things like that for small businesses, but we're just kind of moving on from there. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Um, does, does anything for you? All right, I guess we're going on, Dave, oh no, Sheriff, do you have anything?
Got a suit on today.
I know, I almost missed you.
Incognito. Um, I just wanted to let, um, the board know that, uh, we are having a retirement reception for Curtis Hall on Friday at 3:00 PM, that'll be in the Sam Smith Training Center, um, over at our building. Curtis has been with the county for 25 years and served a variety of roles, um, within the sheriff's office, but, uh, he came to us, uh, very recently and said that it was, he believed it was time for him to move on and, uh, to do something different, so, um, we're going to miss his experience and miss him around the office, but, uh, we're happy for him and his family for, for what they've done, and it's a well-deserved retirement, 25 years of, of service here, so, uh, we, we want to, um, pay the honor to him, and that'll be Friday afternoon at, at 3:00 PM. Um, also, this week, we do have a couple people that are at the, uh, the jail, Kansas Jail Academy, and they'll be graduating Friday, and recently, um, one of our part-time people, Aiden Michael, um, a local, local kid, I, I say kid, he's, he's a grown man, but he graduated from the, uh, from the, uh, Kansas Law Enforcement, uh, Part-Time Academy, so, uh, we've hired him on initially as a part-time corrections officer, and he's kind of advancing through, and he's now, uh, certified as a, as a part-time law enforcement officer. So we're happy for him, and proud, proud of the accomplishments that, that he has made and the contributions that our local people, um, are able to continue to make with, uh, with our office, and using us as a way to sort of give back to the community, so we're, we're proud of them, and, and we just wanted to let you guys know what, what they've got going on, so.
How do the duties and responsibilities of the part-time versus full-time vary?
Um, in which aspect?
Of the law enforcement?
The law enforcement part, most of our, um, people who are certified, uh, part-time certified, do our civil process, and they do, uh, prisoner transports and things like that. Um, his situation's a little unique, because he does still, uh, he's still in college, and so, um, we kind of, we kind of have to work, work with that a little bit, but it's a, it's a, uh-
What about by statute, what can they do versus the-
By statute, there, there is no, there's no difference. Um, they, they are certified, the only difference would be the number of hours that the, that the state allows them to, uh, to work in a law enforcement capacity.
Interesting.
Yep.
Jeff, I know that, that you're far and away the last person in the room that, that I have to say this to, but getting back to Curtis, um, you know, 25 years at any job i- is a tremendous accomplishment.
Correct.
Uh, 25 years in law enforcement, um, with the same agency, that, that's, that's really admirable, and I, I can't imagine, and I say this all the time, I've said this half a dozen times in these meetings, but the, the mental and emotional toll that that job has to take, and to do it for 25 years, that's, um, you know, wait, we owe Curtis a debt of gratitude, that's, that's really, really impressive, so I, I hope that he does. Um, I'll try to get over there on Friday, but i- if I don't, um, I hope that he enjoys his retirement, because he certainly earned it.
I appreciate that, and, and your words, one, a group that oftentimes gets overlooked is the ad emotional and, uh, strain and everything, is the families, the families serve just as, just as much as the, as the officers and deputies do, and so, um, I, I, we're happy for them too, yeah, so.
Cool. Awesome, all right, thank you. All right, David Lee?
I don't have much this morning, just want to let you know that, uh, that we are working through the FEMA documentation and, and trying to help out the city a little bit along the way. Uh, we're also, uh, exploring, uh, different, um, uh, specif-, specifications for dump trucks, uh, so hope to bring that back to you sometime, uh, hopefully within the next month. Um, and we're also looking for a, a new blade operator for, uh, district up in the northwest corner of the county, uh, so we're doing all those things, um, along with, uh, the, the service request, that's, that's never-ending, we've cleared about 444 of those so far this year, uh, got about 166 outstanding, uh, that 150-plus number seems to be what it's always going to be. Uh, we knock some off and, and some get replaced, so, uh, we stay busy with those things, and we're still, uh, picking up sticks from the, uh, the windstorm. Uh, we'll probably be doing that off and on for, uh, several months, and that's all I have, unless you have some questions?
Talked about specking out dump trucks, are you thinking about breaking them up and purchasing one or two?
Absolutely, yeah. Uh, right now, we're looking at, uh, trying to bring two onboard, um, and then, uh, at a later date, looking at two additional. Um, we had, there, there, there's a slight possibility, very slight, that, um, um, we might be able to bring, uh, four of them to you, uh, to kind of lock in prices and still get the different, um, uh, year models, uh, but we're getting so late in the year that that may not be possible, but, um, um, we really want, regardless if we're able to make that happen, we're really wanting to hone in on the specs to make sure that, um, that we get a, a set of trucks that, uh, meet our needs, uh, both today and going forward. Uh, we want these trucks to, uh, to hold up, uh, to, to be, you know, in, in the year eight, nine, and 10, uh, we want them to be in a little better condition than, than what we have right now, and so, um, we're, we're looking at those specs hard, we're visiting with vendors, in fact, uh, we'll be in, in Wichita tomorrow, uh, looking at some trucks and talking about specifications with a, with another vendor, and we've got a third one set up, or are going to be set up here shortly as well, so we're trying to cover all the bases, make sure that we, uh, bring a good recommendation back to you all before we move forward.
My husband and I were driving on Eisenhower Road yesterday, or the day before, they put a new culvert in there, oh, about two miles south of town, and that drop-off is like right off the road, and he was like, oh wow, and I'm like, well, there's a culvert there, but it just seemed like that, that drop, if, if you-
I'll have to-
Yeah, slide off that road at all, it's like, ooh, wow, there's a big hole there. Uh, I mean, we don't generally put, um, guardrails and things out, but it's like right on, on, on the road, but, anyway.
Okay, I'll take a look at it.
All right, all right, thank you. Janet, nothing for you, or Don?
Uh, not much, just, I did come in the health department and ambulance department yesterday, or Tuesday, yeah, me, yes, we attended, I attended the CPR training that they offered, and, and, uh, that whole series that they provided was very, very good knowledgeable information, common to them, but to the normal person, a lot of it was, uh, a good ed-, good education, and very good, very well attended, and very well put on by the health department and the ambulance department.
You?
Yeah, I went to the ECAN, uh, board meeting last night, and they gave a little report about, uh, their properties from the storm the other, other day, and, uh, they fared very well, so they didn't have hardly any damage, just, uh, electrical out, uh, electricity being out, and we just went over, uh, the basic, uh, departments and where they were at with their budgets and, uh, their operations, that's about it.
Been to a handful of meetings, uh, area agency on aging, of course, that, uh, agency picked up mills on wheels, the nutrition program a few years back, um, and that's always been a very, uh, tough program to run, it needs exceeded, uh, resources for a long time, but, uh, since pandemic, food prices, labor prices, vehicle replacement, everything, that, that's diverged, that, you know, that gap's diverged, uh, continued, and if it weren't for the COVID funds that, you know, area agency on aging's been good custodians of, they've really stretched those, we would have, uh, it would have been a big issue a while ago. Those funds will eventually run out, and, um, there's going to have to be changes to the program, um, so, uh, obviously, you're going to, you know, invite Leslie, she's got a lot of really historical data that goes back a long time, it shows trends, it shows the reality where we're in, um, and, uh, eventually, would like to invite her in to, to, you know, let us all know, you know, I've, I've, I sit in those meetings, but, um, that's on the horizon, nothing really to, you know, today to, to think about, or, or, uh, other than to know that is a conversation that will have to come up, so, that program will have to probably be adjusted, uh, significantly in order to feed the most people with the available funds, which I think is ultimately the goal, so, but.
All right, I just, uh, did a couple, I went to the FCDC executive board meeting last Thursday, um, and then also I did, went to, and it's dinner on us, and it's provided with a grant through the Amer-, uh, the Agency on Aging, um, it was originally three, four, three? Four, four, um, lunches, and Chanel has a grant that will extend that, and every time the, um, the, the attendance has grown, and so yesterday, this room was pretty full. Um, I, we did decide that probably it's not, if, if somebody is going to collapse here in this meeting, and, and you're going to depend on either Don or I to give you CPR, we're going to go to the doctor's office and get somebody there, because that's probably best, but it's also good to have the knowledge, because you never know, but, you know, I'm calling 911 first thing, because I want people there to help me, because I'm not doing that very long, because that takes a lot of work, um, otherwise, and so, anyway, so that is going to extend, so the, the next one, um, was going to be the last one, but now it's going to keep going, and, and so, uh, programs for, um, people over 60. Um, if there's nothing else to come before, well, no, we're going to go take our tour, is that going to be a part of it? We're going to go ahead and-
I think you can adjourn.
Go ahead and adjourn, and then we're going to take a tour, and be excited to pick up, all right.